At the church tonight, so as soon as track practice was over, Dad was lying in the grave. I gotta go home and bake brownies. I think that's a good Easter. Because we're having a baby shower tomorrow.
It's me and the mousse.
She's the radiology.
First baby.
Not new, she's new, isn't she?
Uh, she's been here probably a lot. Probably two or seven years.
Maybe I haven't just done a radiology, maybe that's a good thing that I don't know.
That's probably a good thing.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the candidates for coming tonight, as well as the high council and the patrons of Ellenwood. We'll go ahead and start tonight by answering question number one. Why are you running for the position on the board? And we'll start with Mrs. Thomas right here. And if you can limit your answers to one to two minutes, that'd be great. Go ahead and state your name, and then go ahead and make sure we get the microphone.
My name's Lori Thomas. And the reason I would like to run for school board is I would like to make sure our students get the best education possible. I've been on it for several years. And I just, my biggest issue is I just want to make sure that students get what they really, really deserve. I really care about this community, care about our kids. I just, I feel I have the best interest in my heart for them. I want to be a positive influence on all the quality community. I've been on it for several years. I enjoy, I enjoy the school board. I like the challenge. But my biggest thing I would say is for the kids.
Okay, I'm Tanya Slesinger. And I do have three kids in the school system right now. And one more that will be entering the school system in a couple of years. And like Lori, I have the kids in my mind and want to do what is best for them. I want to be involved in the decision-making process for our school and to continue what our school has been doing. I feel it's been a good job, and I just want to be a part of that right now.
Hi, my name is Becca Maxwell. And I have been a part of this community for the past 11 years, moving here from Osaria, Kansas. I have two young daughters. One is in second grade and the other one is seven months old. And I really feel it's important for the future of our community to be proactive in your school district. Because I think the school district is really what a community is all about. So really, you know, you can't sit back and watch decisions happen if you really feel strongly about something. So I want to get involved for the future of my daughters, for the future of our friends' children, and be a positive influence on the board.
My name is Bob Baker. And like the previous three people here, I kind of echo their sentiments. And that I also have three children in the district currently. And I just care about their education and also the education of our friends' children as well. And I think we all up here just want to provide the best opportunity for all of our kids to be successful.
My name is Trish Berger. And I have decided to run for the position of Ellenwood School Board because I wanted to learn more about what is necessary, the skills that are necessary to make the challenging decisions that are, that establish our successful administration, our teachers, our students, and our community. I've had children within this school system since 1990. And I've seen many changes within our school system. And I believe that we need to continue with broadening our horizons. We need to continue with broadening the knowledge of our students. And I think that by serving on this school board, I will be able to help to do that. I also wanted to emphasize to the community that those that sit on this school board have been elected to work for them. Even with the emphasis of today's schools is being funding and the AYP, which is adequate yearly progress. The most attention needs to be put on the decisions that we are making to change and for the changing learning and success of our children. So I'm here tonight to run for Ellenwood School Board.
Well, I'm Diana Smith. And as everybody said before me, I'm here for the kids. I have one son, and he has gone from kindergarten. He is currently in high school in the school district. And it is a challenging time. And I think we all need to be involved in making the school the best it can be for our kids because they're our future. If we do not educate them properly, who's going to be our doctors, our lawyers, our plumbers, our electricians? These kids need these opportunities. And with today's environment, with the funding issues, I feel it's important that if we're not part of the solution, we're part of the problem. So that's why I'm running.
Now that we've gone through the first question, please, if there's anybody out there in the audience, raise your hand. And if you have any questions that you'd like to ask, we'll go ahead and, if there's a question out there, we'll make sure that everyone on the board here gets to answer that question. So please make sure if you have a question, please let us know, let me know. And we'll make sure we get that. Are there any questions at this time? Question number two, what will be your top three objectives if elected to the Board of Education? Go ahead and start. Let's go ahead and start on the opposite end.
Working with the board to create funding for the schools and make sure that we are able to retain and hire the best quality teachers that we can for... That we can have the best quality of teachers for our students for whatever class it might be. So I think that that's the biggest thing, is going to be the funding issues. Because as Governor Brownback has so graciously cut us again, it's going to be very critical for us to think of positive new ways to get things done so that we can still continue to have the best education for our kids that we have had in the past.
Three objectives that if elected to the school board that I would have is to broaden my knowledge about ways to provide exceptional educational opportunities for the students of USD 355 without depleting the outstanding teachers that we have in this district. To better inform the community about the decisions that are made by the school board. And to make sure that the teachers, school employees, the students, and the community know that we are there for them. That we want to hear their suggestions. And that we can act more appropriately, make these decisions that will affect our students for years to come.
Three objectives I was thinking of. First being work with teachers and administrators to do whatever it takes to provide the best opportunities for our children's education. Secondly, I was thinking I would work to examine ways to operate the district more efficiently in my current occupation. That's really what we focus on is building efficiency and maintenance and things like that. I feel like I could bring a good perspective to that. And thirdly, I would like to work on strengthening all athletic programs. Working with the coaches and just doing whatever we can to provide the coaches what they need to be successful.
My three objectives are, number one, to make sure that the school board is being financially responsible, especially in these tough economic times. But also making sure, I do understand that that also puts some stresses on the teachers that are working for the school district. So make sure that there is job satisfaction still while there is a need to make cuts. I know there's more and more pressures being put on the teachers. And we have to remember that the teachers didn't go into this job because there's a lot of money in it. They went into it because they love students. And they work with our kids and our neighbors' kids. And they love what they do, and they love their content areas. So while we still have to be very aware of the financials, I think job satisfaction is also very important. As a coach's wife, I have sat through many a junior high football game, basketball games. I've celebrated in their successes. I've gone home and known it's going to be a really long night after their defeats. So I'd like to see a partnership between the Ellenwood School District Athletics with our Ellenwood Rec Commission, come up with a focus group of community members, as well as parents that want to take an active role in our future of our athletics for our students. You know, come up with that focus group, do a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Let's work together for a common vision so we can start at a young age and know how to win when we're second grade and then into, you know, high school. And the third thing, I have a love of the school district. I have a love of my community. I want to get out there, and I want to tell people what Ellenwood School District has, the opportunities, the wonderful community, and what it has to offer. So I think just getting out there and talking to people about Ellenwood and inviting them to our community and telling them all about our school district.
Everything she just said. I'm hard being married. Now, first of all, I would like to say that I want to make sure that we do continue the quality education that we do get here. These teachers do work hard, and our kids do deserve the best. And I just want to make sure that that's first and foremost, that benefits our community and our kids. And secondly, I have to say communication between the school, the community, and the school board members. I want to hope, I hope to have a positive attitude and encouragement for just good talking between us and teachers and doing what's best for the teachers and our students. And third, I want to be a part of the leadership and part of a group that will help enforce these decisions. And I want to just make sure that we can all work together and help provide these things that is needed for our school and for our students.
I agree with both of them. I want to try to help find solutions for our tight money problems that we're struggling with and we will continue to struggle with. I feel that we're on a good way right now. I mean, I think we're doing a great job on that. But you never know where it's going. Bring, I want to bring another objective, an open mind to the board decision-making. And I want to help formulate school policies that would be beneficial to the entire community. I think, I want to keep that connection with the community and our school to, not just for athletics, but there's so much that these kids can do. Debate and forensics to art. I mean, there's just so much. I mean, my kids are out for athletics also. But we need to have so much. We just need to keep going with the education. And the education is the biggest, the biggest part. And have these opportunities and to also bring these kids back to this community.
Do we have any other questions out there? Please don't be shy. Don't be bashful. Sure we have one question. Okay. Any more questions?
Okay. Can we talk about your business? What you've learned from your business to be able to bring to the economics of our school system? Does anybody else have a business? Or just a budget mind, I guess, in order to bring? Do you have anything previously that you feel would be beneficial for the budget that you would bring to the board?
The question was, what special, any degrees or...
Yeah, knowledge, not necessarily degrees, but just knowledge wise, I guess.
Experience to the board. In the business realm. Go ahead and start with Bob Baker.
Well, what I was speaking of there is the current job that I perform now is, it's building automation where we go into a school or an office building or a hospital and install all these controls on the heating and air system and lighting and, you know, whatever else that can be controlled. Then we're able to, and for that matter, monitoring power usage and things like that. So we're able to get an idea of what it really costs to run a building this size or the grade school size. And we can figure out ways to shorten the runtime of those pieces of equipment, you know, which in turn saves a district money which can be used in other areas.
I'm a mother with four children. And there are times where you have to budget. If you don't have the money, you don't spend it. And I've not always been a teacher. I've also been a par educator. And I know that funds sometimes are just not there. You know, not everybody makes extravagant money. And you have to budget. As far as a business, I guess in my own way, I have a business. Because I've had to raise children. I've had to make sure that they've gotten what they need, not what they want. And make them successful within their life to understand that you've lived by your means.
Well, I work in the medical field, but we also have to work within a budget. There's not always money for new equipment. You have to make do with what you have. So yes, I've had to work within a budget with the hospital because we never know what Medicare is going to do either. So we're used to those kind of cuts as well. So yes, I have worked with budgets.
I've worked in the school district for 10 plus years. I know how the, I mean, it's tight everywhere. I grew up a farmer's daughter. So I, there was five of us kids, so I know how it is to cut money. Plus, I am a mom, and moms' kids, they're the last. You provide for your kids, and that's how I feel that my decisions would be is for the kids here first.
I am a stay-at-home mom. I have four children, like them. And sometimes it is tough to tell your kids no to certain things. And you have to, just like Tricia said, that, you know, it's not always what they want. It's about what is needed. And my husband is a farmer, and I do a lot of the bookkeeping for the farm. I do a lot of hands-on stuff with trying to do accounting processes and stuff like that. And I do know how to work with numbers and to how to figure things so that we can work within our means of the school. And I hope that I can bring that to the school board as well, knowing how to work with money and finding ways to just squeeze out what we can to make it best for our kids. Because like she said, Sam Brownback has cut back again. And we want to do what we can with what money is provided. And that is best suitable for our children. And I feel I can do that with what knowledge I have at home and with my children.
I have a degree in business communications, business marketing and communications from a four-year liberal arts college. After completing my higher education, I went into the communications side of that degree. And I worked at the newspaper for four years, followed by three years in television with KSN, NBC. And from there, I learned to really communicate with people, to express my ideas, to present them clearly. That sales aspect of really going out and talking with people and the community members. Just sales and influence in that position. From there, I went into the business side of my degree and went into the financial area and banking. And for the last five years, I've been the customer service officer at Sunflower Bank. So on a daily basis, I work with people that walk in the door and say, what am I doing wrong? You know, and you've got to talk to people about budgeting. And so I'm, and really, my position is working with public entities, cities, counties, public school districts from all over Kansas, answering banking questions. Because public entities are a different breed than normal customers. They have to do a lot of different things with their money that other people can't do. So to be able to understand their questions and to work with them and give them ideas on, you know, we're going to have to pledge funds for you, but let's look at other ways where you can make money in other areas because everybody wants their money working for them. But understanding the basics of accounting, of a general ledger, and working with businesses on a daily basis and budgeting is, yes, that's kind of what I've been doing in the last five years in my position.
Any other questions out in the audience?
How do you think is the balance of academic and also extracurricular as far as sports? How do you feel on the balance of how that needs to be for the students?
Any questions about the balance of the extracurricular along with the academic?
As far as the subject?
As far as the subject. Go ahead and start, Mrs. Slesinger.
Need a little time to write that down. Honestly, I think, you know, academic-wise, that's what's first. That's what kids need to learn. That's going to be their basis for their whole life. But so much is learned through teamwork and teammanship and doing what we can as a team. And as far as sports go, both of them are important to me, learning-wise, athletic-wise. Honestly, without getting into the numbers and not knowing all of that right up hand, it's hard to say what could be cut, what may be cut, what we want to keep and everything. So I think it would be hard to, I mean, I guess another part of me would ask, is something more important or the other? And I can't really define that. But having a budget set aside for each thing when one aspect brings so much to our school and the other aspect also brings a lot to our school, so.
You know, Mr. Jacobs talks a lot about striving for excellence. And I think, you know, it is, like she said, it's hard to not know the numbers on the budget at this time. But striving for excellence in education, in athletics, in, you know, any extracurricular activities, I think is very important because then you build that excellent, you know, you build that reputation of excellence in your schools, in all entities. So it's difficult to say which one's more important. But some actually do bring money into your school, you know? It's ways to get the community and parents involved because there's ways that we can fill the football stadium. And that's going to bring revenue to our school. You know, how can we get parents that don't have high school students playing football? How can we get them to the game on Friday night? How can that be the best thing that we can be doing on a Friday night? Is tailgating and bringing money into the community. And people will spend money at the concession stand. So there's ways that athletics can make money on their own. But we as a community need to make sure we're supporting that. The education, again, is making sure that the teachers are happy and we're supportive of them. The job satisfaction is there. And again, I don't know the numbers and the figures, but really, they're both going to work hand in hand if we strive for that excellence in both parts.
Like Becca and Tanya both, it's hard to say exactly what you would give to one over the other. Education's definitely number one. But I would also say that you can build pride in a district any number of ways. Educationally, athletically, through the arts, through debate, forensics. So I think it's important to do as much as we can for each of those areas. And just to, the overall goal is to really build the pride because that's what's going to keep the program successful year after year. The students wanting to be the best that they can be and continue to achieve at a high level, so.
This is a tough question because it is buttering your bread sometimes on one side. And what's the best? Academics has to be number one. I do not want a community that says sports comes before academics. I do not want to see money going towards sports if we're cutting academics. We have to let the children learn first. That has to be in the classroom first. We have to support our teachers 110% because they are going to make a difference, that our kids want to go out for those sports. That they are proud enough of themselves internally that they want to go out for that sport. If we are having a school that does not take pride in their teachers, do not take pride in their school, and does not take pride in their academics, then we don't have children that take pride in themselves. And so the sports will not be successful anyway.
Well, I think as everybody else has said, I think we do, academics has to come first. But like the others have said as well, sports are very important. That builds self-confidence a lot in these kids. Music, drama, the dramas, the forensics and debate. All these things build confidence in these kids. And not every kid is right for every situation. If we offer all these programs, or as many as we possibly can, that will hit most of these kids, that they can have an area that they can excel in. Because not every kid is going to be your valedictorian, get those straight A's. You know, maybe they excel on the football field or the track or whatever. They can have that confidence to say, hey, that's my niche. That's where I can excel. But then that will carry over into their academics, and it will help them. So I think both, all of it is, it was really critical. But yes, academics does have to come first.
I feel education is the biggest thing. I have three students, three kids that are athletic. I get very torn, but I know that every day that my kids, their academics come first. I mean, they know that their education is first. And to be able to go out for tennis, to be able to go out for softball and track and basketball, they know that they need that. And they know that's the most important thing. And I feel proud that I don't even have to pressure them to, now, did you get this? Because they know that they want that. They know that when they're done with Ellenwood, they're hoping that some of them will be able to go on and play sports elsewhere. But they know that they need their education. And I feel that our school is doing a really good job of keeping them both going through the athletic department, through the music department, the art department. I mean, we've got kids that have got, their pictures are out at the college. And it's just awesome, you know, what we're doing, the education and the athletics and all of it.
Questions out in the audience? Okay, what special strengths do you believe you would bring to the school board? We'll go ahead and start with Mr. Baker.
Well, as a lifelong resident and a product of this district, I'm just wholeheartedly committed to doing whatever I can to help make the district successful. I feel that I can be fair and also impartial with decisions in the best interest of the students and the district. And just to, I guess, repeat what I said earlier, you know, I feel like I can look for ways to help save the district money.
As a teacher, I understand the necessary measures that is needed to be taken on a daily basis to manage a classroom and to make our school successful. I understand what the state of Kansas is requiring of the schools, the principals, the teachers, and the students to make AYP. I have been a member of the Ellenwood Booster Club for the last 15 years. And I've set in as a member of the... as a member of the Booster Club for the past two years. I currently am a member of the NEA, which is the National Education Association, and I keep in touch with the legislation and the bills that are impacting our schools financially and professionally. I understand the impact of the school, to the school employees if some of the bills that the legislature passes and how the other bills will impact the schools. The governor has recommended that the school lose $75 per student this school year and another $157 per student next school year. So that means that a total of $232 per kid we're going to lose here in Ellenwood. So that tells us right there, from what I understand from the Division of Administration Services, that Ellenwood's going to lose approximately $108,691. We need to find out how we can do that without taking away from our children. I think that with knowing some of the things that the legislation is doing right now, I would be able to bring my knowledge there to help make some changes so that we can benefit the students at the same time make the necessary cuts that we need to.
Probably the biggest strength I have is the desire to make the district and the schools the best they can possibly be for all our students. I'm used to dealing with people in the medical community, working with budgets, all those strengths I can bring to the table, but probably the biggest one is the desire to make this the excellent school that it has been and that it can continue to be.
I've been a lifetime member of this community. I am very proud of this community, very proud of this school. I went to school here, I'm proud to be able to say that my kids have gone to school here. I worked in the school district for 10 plus years. And when people ask me, where do my kids go? I'm proud to say they go to Ellenwood. I just, I love this town, I love this school. Want to be able to give back what I can to this community, what they've given to me. I want to make sure that the students, the staff, they have voices, I want to be able for them to be heard. I always have my phone with me, I've gotten many phone calls. I want to hear from people, I want to be able to answer their questions, bring it to the board, and see what can be done. I feel like I have a good rapport with the community.
I am also a resident of Ellenwood. I've lived here since 1988, and I graduated from here, and I also graduated from Barton County Community College. And I feel I am able to look at all sides of the situation. I am able to take in, you know, different viewpoints, different things, and able to make a decision from all aspects, so that way we can make the decision that is best for our kids. And I want to approach every situation like that. I want to approach it, most decisions with that question, what is best for the kids? And I feel the board has been doing a good job at this, and I would like to be a part of that. I feel like things can be challenging, but I like to take on challenges. I like to, I have four kids, it's challenging enough sometimes, but I like to, I want to assist the board in situations, good or bad. I don't know what's going to happen. I feel like my kids are doing great in school, they have great teachers who are teaching them well, and they are not hurting by anything, but I want to be a part of the decision-making process to continue what is going on. I have served on other boards, I have served on my church board for daycare and preschool. I presently am still serving on Cancer Kids, Fighting Cancer Foundation Board, I've been on it for almost three years now. And that, both of those are very important to me. I hope to make it on the school board, I hope to be a part of my children's education for their future, and I will continue on Cancer Kids Board as well for many different reasons. And as I said earlier, I also have the keeping skills and want to give that back and try to be able to evaluate and look at budgets and know what to do with money that is there or isn't there. So that's what I can do.
I mentioned before that I have a background in communications, business marketing, so I feel like I can bring that strength to the school board. Also, the background as somebody that works in a financial area where I work with public entities on a weekly basis, helping them to budget and answer any banking questions that they may have. I've also been a manager for 10 years, so I understand that HR side of being on the school board. You know, hiring's great, but then you also have the opposite of making some very difficult choices, and especially, a school board is, you know, they're running a business, there's enough money here for certain things, so you have to make the tough decisions. So I do have an HR background as well. Working at the bank, I understand what it is to be confidential. You have to be private and confidential in what you do. I don't go home and tell my husband, I saw Joe Smith at the bank today, he was making a deposit, or Sally Smith is buying a house. These are things that are private and confidential, and I take that also into executive session. I would be terminated from my position if I disclosed information at my job. The same should be for the school board. So I bring that also confidential and privacy experience. And also, I married a teacher. You know, at family reunions, I have 12, 13 teachers that come, two superintendents, one school counselor, one administrator, two people that sit on school boards, one that sits on the Athletic Association for Kansas in Topeka. These are hot topics. I mean, education is a hot topic at any family reunion. You know, no child left behind is a hot debate at things that we go to. So while I'm not a teacher myself, I'm married to one, I love one, and I live with one every day. So I feel like I have that strength of having knowledge of what it is to be in education.
Any questions out there?
Howard asked something. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for filing. It shows a lot of courage, especially in times like this where, you know, every bit of news you get from Topeka seems to be worse and worse. So I do want to give kudos to you. It's a very easy to criticize decision, it's an entirely different path to try to make decisions, and for that, you guys should be commended. My question is, what do you feel like is the greatest challenge presenting the district, and how would you solve that challenge?
I can...
Have we started with you yet?
You don't need to. Wow. There's so many. There is just so many. As we all know, funding, that's going to be one of the biggest because if the funds aren't there, then something has to change. And it's gotten to the point where not much can change. We have to serve the students, and we have to serve them to our best ability, but something has to change. I think one of the biggest things that we have to do right now is to get all the knowledge that we have as a school board, as a school, to the community, to let them know all about us. Because I think Ellenwood has lost touch a little bit with what actually is going on with the school system. And once your children are no longer in school maybe, or because there's just so many changes, we need to get people to our board meetings and to let them know, one way or another, of what's going on within our schools and why we're having to make cuts, or why we are doing this. We have to open up our doors, we have to open up either our papers, or Channel 13, or just knocking on doors and telling our community what we need, what we need from them, and become a team instead of a board that sits up here and makes decisions, and we have so many people out there that have no idea why.
I think funding is the big thing because you can't do very much of anything without money, of course, but I think we do need to draw the community in. We have a lot of older citizens that I think kind of think, oh, my kids are grown, I don't have to worry about this. Well, you know, if we lose the school, we lose everything else. In a small town, that's the lifeblood of a community. And so we do need to get our older people, the ones who don't have children, involved. We have a lot of great business people out here, we need to get their input, what we can do, how we can raise more money, how we can get more people involved. I just think getting the community behind us is a critical issue right now, that the community understands where the board is going and their vision, and gets behind the kids and the school.
I would also have to say it's probably funding at this point in time, and it's a difficult problem to solve because, of course, it's funded by taxpayer money, so it's not like we can ask for a raise. You know, with the big cuts that we had last year, I know it was very difficult, and the board had to go through and find areas where they could, you know, take money away. And so I'm sure things are probably already lean, and I haven't seen the numbers, so I don't know exactly what's going where, but, I mean, I'm sure there's other ways or other areas that could still be trimmed. And as far as getting revenue up from other places, I don't know, we just have to be, use our imaginations on trying to raise revenue other areas.
You know, I would see our greatest challenge is probably, you know, the state funding. I'm sure it's going to be a constant challenge in the next several years, if not more. You know, I work in an environment that is financially driven, and we see changes every day, you know, but we are governed by the federal government, and they make changes, and they tell us this is how we're going to do things, and we have to change and accept how we're going to do things in my position currently. So I understand that the funding is going to be an issue, we have to be strategic for future decisions because it will directly affect the future of our community. In turn, we need community support. Like they mentioned, there are some older people in the community that we need to get them to rally around our school and the younger kids and the younger families that are in the district. And also, you know, everybody's struggling right now, businesses are struggling, people are hurting. You know, you see where, you know, where they made some changes last year or a couple years ago, and teachers had to go to school and didn't know if they were going to have a job the next day. So job satisfaction, even though it's a very difficult time, we have to figure out ways to run a business financially and be responsible, but also say, you know, teachers, you're doing a great job, we can't give you raises, but these are some things that we can do. And there's other ways that you can, you know, raise money. Like I said, get the community involved in athletics. You know, that's where funding can come into the school by getting, you know, the football field and, you know, the stands full. The foundation, I know there's a library foundation, but there are several ways. I came from a different school that raised money through their public, through their school foundation, and they raised several hundreds of dollars just through community support, through their foundation also, and that also helped the school. But I definitely see state funding as an issue. I haven't seen all the numbers, but I'm certain that will be, that will be something that will carry on for future generations that we need to look to right now.
I have to agree with them, that funding is an issue, it always will be an issue. And some of the consolidations that had to happen last year, I wouldn't, you know, you don't like to see it happen, but we have to do and maintain what we can to just keep the school going, and that's what we want to see first and foremost, is the school to keep going. And as me being involved in Cancer Kids and doing fundraisers, I know I can bring that to the school. I don't know, as a school board member, we have to do that, but, you know, fundraising has to become a part of it. I know how to do that, I know how to get the community out and get them involved in trying to do things for our school, and I hope I can be a good advocate for that. And, you know, those challenges lay ahead, and I'm hoping that with being on school board and setting these budgets, that we are able to save money or hold money for future generations, that we can keep this going and not run into times where we have absolutely nothing. And I want to see that happen for our school so that we can keep it.
I feel our biggest challenge is our budget crunch. We need to keep focused on it. We're doing, I mean, I feel we're doing a good job of keeping on top of things, but keeping the community involved and letting them know by televising, and the class that we've started has really helped, newspaper, getting the pictures of not just the athletics, but of what's going on in the classroom so that the community knows what these kids are doing and not just always hearing, you know, negative things. Just keeping the community involved.
Any more questions?
As my active involvement in the community, I hear a lot of you saying, community involvement, community involvement. Well, I hope you know that the Chamber is here, that helps do that, and we did a fall kickoff last year, it was the first thing that we had done something like that, to try to let the youth know in our community how important that is. But it's also important that people from the school, you know, help support the Chamber also, and we have to do. So how important do you feel that the relationship is between the city, the Chamber, and the school?
How important is it, of the relationship between the school, community, and the Chamber?
Because we, you know, it's important, I mean, we are trying to help, we've really stepped up what the Chamber is trying to do for the school, and so I guess I need to know, as a candidate, how you feel it is to go the other way also.
I feel it's very important. I think having the school and the Chamber and the community all wrapped up in one is very, very important. I mean, the community is where we get our kids, it's where our, we wouldn't have, I feel that everything that you're doing is great, you need to get more involved with it and keep it going and keep that communication going. You have things that you need help with, ideas, throw them at us, they go, you know, just keep the doors open.
That is one of my objectives that I stated earlier, good communication between us, the community, and the school. And the more we can strive to do that, the better it will always, always be. And you do a great job of sending out the announcements every week, weekly news reminders and stuff like that, and honestly, I probably wouldn't know half what was going on if you didn't send that to me. And I think that is very important, that you just probably need to work better at coinciding to get it out to more people that way. And I do try to forward it on in emails, and if people know more information by doing that, then if we all do that together, it will help to emphasize and get the word out to all the community. So I think that's the most important, is good communication, work together with it, and we can do that.
I'm a huge advocate for the Chamber. Like I mentioned, I've been in this community 11 years. For eight of those years, I was a Great Bend Chamber ambassador, really was active in the businesses because that's where I worked. I recently had a promotion a few years ago, got the opportunity to come and work in the place that I live, resigned from that position, and got on the Ellenwood Chamber Board. And it is so great to see how active they are in the community and what Nancy has done, and just being a large part of what they are doing currently. You know, I really think the school board does need to take an active role in, and make a connection with the Chamber. You know, a couple of years ago, Red Bar and Pet Products was coming from California. They were going to move 20 of their management team to Barton County. One thing I did was, you know, Great Bend, I know, was making a full court press to make sure these 20 people, you know, families were going to move to Great Bend. I contacted Nancy with the Chamber, I contacted Richard Dole and Kathy Berzer, and I said, listen, let's send information out about what our community has to offer, what does our school have to offer? You know, they don't have to move to Great Bend because that's where the business is. They need to know about what is happening just 10 miles down the road, and from what they had sent... what is happening just 10 miles down the road. And from what they had sent out, the HR director that was coming from California came and decided that she wanted to make Ellenwood her home. Sadly, due to the economic situation in California, two years ago, they weren't able to sell their house. They weren't able to move here. But like my husband and I talked about, how can we, how can we be active in recruiting new people? Well, you have to know what's going on in businesses. Just recently, I was out talking to a business, and they said, "You know, we're going to be having a young family that is going to be transferred here for the next three years." I mean, well, great. What's their names? When are they coming? Can I get them information to tell them about what we have to offer? And I just think being active and really being proactive, you know, at all times. And I think the Chamber is actually the forefront, and they know what's going to happen. So, I think a connection and communication between the school, the community, and the Chamber would be the best option for all of us.
I would also agree that a partnership between the Chamber and the school and the community is very important. And I think it, you know, it actually has to do with one of these other questions on this sheet here, that what to do to make our school district more appealing to incoming families. And I feel like the Chamber, the information that the Chamber gets out really plays a lot into that. Unfortunately, I think one of the other issues that go along with that is our lack of housing for those people that are looking to move to the area. But I do just feel that the partnership and the information sharing back and forth to the Chamber, from the district to the Chamber and vice versa, is a very valuable tool.
I think that the Chamber and Ellenwood Rec and the school system and everything that we have within Ellenwood is essential that we work together as a team. Because if each of us is taking the lead, then we have too many leaders. We need to come together and work as one. And together as one, then we can offer everything that is needed for new people to come in with, into this community and to offer them the best of everything. If we could get even like the old welcome wagon, where we come together and we put something together so that a new family that is coming into our community, they will know everything that is, that is available here, from the hospital clinic to the hospital, to the school, to the chiropractor, to the churches, to everything, and then the Chamber and the rec, knowing everything that's available here at one stop.
And like everybody else has said, it is crucial that all of us work together because we're going to stand or fall together. And so, it is crucial. And if a new family is coming in, I think it is important that they get the information of what we can offer at the school, because I think we have a fabulous school. I don't want to see them go into Great Bend because they don't think we offer, you know, all the things that Great Bend can offer. Well, we do. We have the great programs, and I think it's important that we work with the Chamber so that that information gets out, because I think sometimes it kind of stays within our little, our little area and the word doesn't get out. So, I think it is crucial that we all work together and that the communication is just vitally important.
One of my questions, I know we've talked about budgets, and sometimes things get, you know, gloomy and gloomy, and what, can you share some successes? How would you share your successes with us? I mean, we're doing a lot of good things in our district. You know, you've probably heard some of the good things that we do. How are some things that you can share and promote success within our building?
You know, I think they do a great, I think our school district does a great job of giving information to the Great Bend Tribune. I see the Great Bend Tribune's here. I see the Ellenwood Leader. That's one of the ways to really market yourself. And public relations, PR is free. Let's use it correctly. Let's make sure that, you know, we're getting that information to the newspapers on a daily, weekly basis to let them, let people know about our successes. What Ellenwood has done in the last year with their technology, we're on TV right now, which is crazy. That didn't happen last year. You know, the technology side of what the school has done, we are on the internet. We're on Channel 13. That really is a great way to market your school. You know, my parents who live, you know, two hours away can still watch games on the internet live. I mean, how fantastic is that, what the technology has done? It's just a great way for you to market your school. And secondly, you know, it was so neat when I was driving in my car and 107 would do that radio announcement, and that music would come on, and they'd say, "Boys of the Eagles." And that is fantastic that we were able to get our name out to so many people in the area. So, I just think in the last year, we've taken large strides to make sure that we are, you know, letting people know who we are and where we're at.
Yeah, I just have to say, I haven't, in sorority, I served on getting out PR, getting out things to help with our sorority and get fundraisers going and doing that with Hands for Kids. So, I just have to agree with Becca on that, that we do need to just get the word out and tell how great our community is and tell how wonderful it is to live here. Growing up here, it, you know, was a whole new experience. And now, being on the side of it, to where I get to raise my kids here, I'm very thankful for that. And I do try to recruit people when I see them out and about, and be like, "Come on, move to Ellenwood. You're going to love it over here." And I just think that helps tremendously in going with the radio and newspaper and wherever we can. It just, it helps benefit us all. So, and I like the internet on the, watching the games on the internet, too. I didn't know that we had that until I found out we played our game in the gym with the students and got to watch ourselves. So, that was unique.
The communication with the newspaper and the computer, the internet, the iHi is outstanding, how much the iHi is just, seeing everything on the computer is awesome. And just by meeting people in town, and like Tony said, just word of mouth, telling them how awesome our town is, how awesome our school is.
Well, I would have to agree. The technology has just been amazing, the iHi. And I think it's great that our kids get to help work on running all this, you know, so they're getting that experience. And I think that's, that's just another example of how we are being proactive for our students. And I think it is important that we, you know, when, when the kids are doing great, we contact the newspapers and the radio stations and the television that, to promote our schools. And again, just word of mouth. I think, you know, not, yeah, the budget is bad and everybody knows it, but we need to say, "Hey, you know, we have a great school over here," and be very positive. And I think word of mouth sometimes can mean more even than, than all the promotions you can do. But I think the promotions are also very critical.
I think one of the things that is very, very nice is the newsletter that comes out from the high school that Mrs. Shugram puts together and that she puts on the internet for us. Sometimes that gets me back up to knowing what's going on within the middle school and the high school. And that way, the communication can open up a little bit also with my children, so I can ask them about different things. When you work outside of Ellenwood and your children go to, go to school here, you kind of lose touch with what exactly is they're doing on a daily basis. And that's really nice, and it's a wonderful, she puts it together very nicely. Also, I love that we're seeing more information within the Great Bend Tribune and the Ellenwood Leader. And Channel 13 does a very nice job about putting the information on there so that you will be aware of upcoming things.
I would also have to agree that I'm impressed with our use of all the different media outlets that we're using now. Everything from the Friday Fan Fair, the email that I get on Fridays, to my child's progress reports being emailed to me every week, and, you know, the games being televised and on the radio. I think there's, you know, there's so many different ways that we're already utilizing different tools to share our successes. So, I think we're doing a good job of that right now.
All right. We'll go ahead, and we're going to get ready to close. I'm going to give you each a few minutes to give your final thoughts. And we'll go ahead and start with Ms. Thomas. Or if anybody else is ready. If you'd like to start, we'll give everybody two, three minutes to just give your, to close this up and kind of, once again, sell yourself.
Well, Lori, if you don't mind, I'm going to let you think, and I'll get this off my chest.
One of the reasons that I decided to run for school board was because I had broadened my horizons educationally, and I wanted to continue to broaden my horizons with more knowledge. I think that you need to continue throughout your adult life, learning new things, so that you can take that knowledge and give it to your children. So, one of the questions was, what did you do, or within five years, what have you done? Well, approximately five years ago, I returned to college, but I continued to work full-time within the school system as a substitute teacher and a parent educator. Then in 2007, I graduated from Fort Hay State University with a bachelor degree in elementary education with a minor in special education. I have experienced some of the struggles that our children go through on a daily basis of either not understanding the information and having to go back and ask that teacher, "Hey, can you tell me that again, because I didn't get it the first time?" Or understanding their successes and going, "Yeah, I finally did it." The last three years, I've started a new career and broadened my horizons by becoming a teacher and assisting individuals with special needs. I volunteer to join the teachers on a local NEA committee to better inform myself about teachers and the decisions that the National Education Association is making, and also the state of Kansas is making that's changing our careers and sometimes jeopardizing our careers. And I currently am sitting on a calendar community so that I can better understand how the state, the requirements that the state puts on us, so that we know how many days we have to be in school and why we need to be in school when it snows like you wouldn't believe it. I currently am still broadening my knowledge by taking an ESL program course, actually, it's five courses, to better get to know how English as a second language students learn within our academic classrooms, and how I, as a teacher, can inform them so that they learn, they learn what we need them to learn. I feel that we need to continue to broaden our horizons. And as I was coming home tonight, I found out that today is called Make a Difference Monday. And hopefully, this will be the one Monday that I can let you guys know I want to make a difference on the school board in Ellenwood, Kansas.
As an active and caring citizen of Ellenwood, I aim to work with the teachers, administrators, coaches, and patrons to build a strong district educationally, athletically, and artistically, to promote school pride and help students become active and responsible citizens, ready to continue their next level of education.
I'm excited for the opportunity to sit on, you know, the possibility of sitting on the school board. I have a passion for education. I believe in our teachers. They are the ones that are with our children the most during the school day. You have to make sure that they love what they do. Again, they chose this profession because they love working with children. So, we want to make sure that we are supportive, that we are understanding, that we are in constant communication with the educators. I believe I have the educational background and the work experiences that I could be a vital role for this school board, and I would appreciate your support on April 15th.
You know, I try to help to show that Ellenwood is a good, strong community with good values, and I want to continue that. And I want to do that by being on the school board and by working with the administrators, with the educators, with the students, and trying to keep that together, keeping good communication. And I think I can bring that to the school board. Teachers do need to know that their jobs are important and their needs are met. I'm going off the question, the last question on the paper, what will you, as a school board member, do to assure that teachers have the support materials needed to be successful? Because I want them to be successful so that my children are successful. And I don't know how teachers do it. I could not be a teacher. I love my kids. I could, you know, do everything with them, but, and I want to say academics are crucial, and they're, we need a strong, healthy learning environment, and it's needed for a child to learn. And we do a good job of achieving that here, and I want to continue that here. I want to see it continuing, followed through. And if people are friends with me on Facebook, they'll know that I am a huge advocate of calling legislators, calling them, getting them on the phone and/or mailing them, emailing them. And I can say, for our benefit, you know, it is important for all of us to do that and get on the phone, tell them we need more funding for our students, for our kids. And I will post their addresses, their phone numbers, their email addresses on my Facebook sometimes, just to let people know that they need to get, they need to be involved in that way also. It starts at the state level, and unfortunately, it trickles down to us to make these decisions, and they can be hard. And I want to be able to fill that with the best needs for our kids, and I think I can do that. And I just want to be an involved parent for my kids. I want them to see this and to be a leader for them, to show them that they can make a difference. And I appreciate all of you being here, and I hope that I could be a part of this come election time and to see all of you out there.
I'd agree with you, Tanya. I, my strong thing is I want to continue what I've, I've been on the school board. I want to continue. I enjoy it. I, my heart is totally for the kids. I want the best for them. And I know that it starts, you've got to have the best teachers. I feel we have great teachers. We need to get more involved with workshops to get them to find more avenues. We've got the technology started. We need to keep going and bringing more things in to get our kids to be excited, to wake up every morning to come to school, to something new to learn, to have the great teachers to keep, to bring back great kids that are going to be teachers here someday, new leaders in our town. I just want to continue that. I would love for your support. I feel I've been here. I want to continue to do what I can for the school.
I too, I just want to make a difference. I try to be a role model for my son, and that is one reason I decided to run for the school board, was because if you want to make a difference, you need to get out there and probably out of your comfort zone. But I want to be a bridge between the school board, the teachers, so that we can get the teachers what they want, need, and support them, because it is a hard job. And we want to make sure that they feel comfortable, that they're not always coming to school more worried about, "Are they going to have a job the next day?" rather than, "What can I teach these kids so that they'll be excited to learn today?" So, that's the main reason I tried out for the school board, was so that I could make a difference. Because I think we need advocacy for this, teachers and the community, and working together with the school board. So, I just hope you'll vote for me. So I just hope you'll vote for me.
Once again, I appreciate you guys coming up here. It's not easy. And I hope everyone gets out to vote on the 15th. It is important. Tell everyone that you know. And once again, I appreciate it. Thanks for coming, and this concludes our discussion today. Thank you.
I have strep throat. Good luck. And good luck.
Where'd you get it? Ah! Kansas Day.
Thank you. Thank you.
Guys, thank you. Very difficult thing to do. I appreciate you guys running. Thank you. Very nice of you guys to come up. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Bye. Thank you. Thank you. Bye. Thank you. Thank you, Becca. Thank you.